I'd like to call this, uh, Kansas City Council meeting, February ninth, twenty twenty-two to the org. Uh, I'd like to start with the frame of the work first and then.
Father, we thank you for your grace and your love. We thank you for our town and your resident here. Thank you for our first responders. Thank you for our town employees. And thank you for this, um, governing body. We pray that you would give them discernment, uh, teach us all to be kind and considerate of each other, and you all us and hear me. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Councilmember Noble, councilmember Cummings, councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zemias?
President.
Mayor Hal?
President.
Manager Cavalli?
Here.
Attorney Mora?
President. First thing, first thing we need to do is the, uh, consent for the general lasting funds meeting. Do I have a, uh, what do you call it? A, uh?
Motion.
A motion.
Motion.
It's really terrible to get old, you know?
I'll say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, Mike?
Good evening. Uh, I'd like to call Officer Thomas Hauser. On behalf of the town and the Kansas City Police Department, I'd like to present you the Meritorious Service Award. Um, and what occurred was on January fifteenth of twenty twenty-two at approximately two eighteen a.m., Officer Hauser responded to a Nellis County Sheriff's Office, um, female deputy that was calling for help just outside our, uh, our town. And the female deputy was in a female, uh, was in a physical fight with an aggressive suspect who was attempting, she was attempting to arrest. And, um, basically when Officer Hauser arrived on scene, um, the suspect had, uh, physically took her to the ground in the middle of sixty-sixth street and then climbed on top of her and was trying to injure her. Um, Officer Hauser responded, assisted her, was able to get the suspect into custody. And, um, it was later found that he was a MMA fighter, which is mixed martial arts. So he, he knew what he was doing and, um, she was in a fight of her life. So it was a, a great thing, you know, for him to help out, you know, a brother or sister out here. So, um, so for that, um, I wanted to recognize him with a Meritorious Service Award on behalf of the town and, um, police department. Thank you very much. Awesome job. And here's a, a pen for your uniform as well.
Don't hurt me. Congratulations.
I'll give you half your votes if you do.
You're proud, I think. Good job. Okay. At this time, I'd like to open up a public forum. Uh, anybody who would like to come up to speak, um, just please sign in with your name and address. And, um, three minutes. Do we have anybody who'd like to speak? Yes, sir. Come on up.
I feel that is hard.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Mike Loomers. I was at sixteen thirty-eight forty-fourth Avenue North. Been a resident for sixteen years, end of this month. Um, I'm not opposed to ordinances. I believe in the codes and all that, but I need to tell you a little story and then I have some questions to ask. I don't know who to direct them to. Probably all of you. Um, I, on, let's see, it was January twenty-fourth. I went and got my camper out of storage, camped for four days. Thursday afternoon, two o'clock, parked in my yard on the grass, on the side of my driveway away from my house. Nine thirty next morning, I get a, a violation notice. I've never seen any enforcement ever done in the city for sixteen years that I've been here. They are, they're not doing a good job. There's cars in yards. There's driveways that are too far over. There's fences that aren't properly installed. I've seen work done without permits. And I get hammered in less than twenty-four hours where I, I paid to have my trailer stored, but I had to get it home and unload it and get it down to the storage unit. Um, it seems as I drive around, nothing's still being done. There's cars parked in yards. There's boats in yards. There's boats on grass. There's cars on grass. What are we doing? Are we just hitting RV vehicles? What's, what's the story on code enforcement? Man, I'm really shocked. I'm not opposed to it. I need some adjustment. I'm not opposed to that, but all of a sudden, boom, here I am. I'm the guilty guy.
You only get look guilty. Um, what, what's? Let me, let me explain something to you. Uh, as long as I've been up here, uh, on the city council and everything for the last, you know, this is my fifth year. And I've heard people always say that, uh, the city council, you, you're wasting your time coming there, talking to the city council, okay? And you started out when you said, I don't know who I should be talking to. Well, let me introduce you to Pete. Pete is our town manager. And if you will go in and make an appointment or just walk in and see him and talk to him, you will get more results because the, the five of us really have nothing to do with that, okay? We, we are the legislation branch of this government. So the person who, that you really need to talk to is Mr. Pete, right? I don't want to cut you short, but I did. And he was very nice and polite and explained what things that were happening. My concern is, I was cited like that. You weren't fined. You weren't fined. You were just, you were just warned, correct? It's, we're in the education. But there's, again, you can go down just about any street in Kansas City and find violations. Sheds too close to property lines, driveways over, houses exceeding the offset from the front of the street. What's happening? Do you see that gentleman? Do you see that gentleman back there? His name is Dave. Hey, yeah. He, he is new. We have just started all this process of taking care of all this. That man right there is in charge of it. You really need to talk to him. I, I, I did. And, and if, if he doesn't explain to you what's going on and he doesn't give you a, a proper answer of what, what's happening, then you can come back and, and talk to us. And, and we'll just look at Mr. Pete and say, Mr. Pete, why is that happening? You know, that's our job. But anytime you need anything done. Well, I guess I'm asking that right now. Well, that's my code enforcement. And he was very polite and forward with me. I have no problem. I'm glad. I'm very pleased, everything. But I just, I'm not seeing anything happen in other than I still see cars and yards. You're, you're, we're working on it, sir. We are.
I'll just handle that. Just, just to let you know, we hired Dave Yisong about a month and a half ago. And I'm doing this for the benefit of the public as well. So about a month and a half. And Dave, about how many, uh, courtesy notices have you put out?
Um, just now, eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven this month. So, you know, we have, what, about two thousand units, only about thousand and some units, single pending houses. So he's going through it as fast as he can. Not to mention, there's several processes that we have to do for enforcement as well. Uh, me and Randy, uh, sorry, Attorney Mora, have worked together. There's a special, uh, RFP for a special magistrate that's out there. So we're putting together the clause that we need to really do, you know, proper enforcement. So, that being said, I've also physically driven out around the community every few days. And I actually have seen improvements. You know, some of the first things that we were looking at is parking on grass. And it really does sound like it was just coincidence that, you know, it just happened to me. You came home today and broke down your brother.
Oh, it was a shock. I'll be honest with you. It was a shock.
Yeah. And honestly, he's coming out with the personality of that this is courtesy notice. I just want to start a conversation. You know, when we talk about enforcement and I forgot the word to use, but I was like, oh, man, no, no, no. He's just going out there being, you know, again, just trying to talk to you and see if there's, you know, what we can do.
So what happens if they don't, like, I, I, the next, well, I think I stayed, kept my trailer there like another three days, that I had to do a little bit of work on it, whatever.
Yeah. And what happens if I didn't do it immediately? I think he gave me seven days, I think, to move it. What happens then? Well, again, we're going through the process of having a special magistrate and some of the other things. Um, they go along with code enforcement. So again, we're really kind of constituting this. So honestly, he probably would have given you another courtesy notice. Now, by the time that third one would have come around, that you would have had someone to, to come to a special magistrate.
We're going.
Or before that, to even really talk to us and see. Dave's really good. He's got a background in building construction and all that. And, you know, again, working with our building officials and our building inspectors and permit writers, you know, come, be trying to come up with some solutions, you know, that has cost effect before you. And so it was nice. Handles things like the environmental quality, stormwater quality, things like that.
Yeah, Peter. Well, we're, sir?
Yeah.
We're going to listen to everything you have to say, okay? That's what we're here for. We're also going to have a program that when someone has a motorhome or RV or whatever off someplace else and needs to bring it home and to work on it. And I, you know, one of the ideas that we're kicking around is to give them a permit, you know, just, okay, you're going to be here working on your vehicle. That's fine and damn. You know, we're, we're going to work with you. Trust me. We are going to work with you. I hope so. And I think that's the atmosphere that I, or the feeling I got. Right. Well, he's correct. But I just, again, I guess I was shocked by it because I've been here sixteen years and I've seen absolute violations everywhere. On, carports that are not permanent carports up in people's yard, been there for over a year. Nothing has ever said or done about that. Well, I'd love to have one. I, I have two vehicles as most everybody in Kansas City in the world has two, three, four, five vehicles. And there's no place to park. But you have a restricted list to out, where we can put our driveway and stuff. Well, we need to address some codes or something. Well, so where the reality is, that's what the reality is today. We need to adjust that. Okay. We have to move on. Okay. Okay. Arnold was giving me the eyeball. So that's why we have to move on.
Yes, sir. Ken Nielsen, uh, fifty-nine forty-one forty-sixth Ave. And to, to further this gentleman's conversation, I've attended some of the workshops. And after one of the workshops, when we started talking about the permit idea, uh, Bonnie had mentioned about parking vehicles on, anyway. My thought was, if you have an RV or a boat, you store it off-site, like I do, or as the gentleman does, and we talked about a permit, you have one set of guidelines for that group of people. If you have people that have the property or the ability to park their vehicle in your driveway and it meets all of the current codes, then they follow a different set of guidelines. Where we were talking about, how do you have guidelines for two different? So my thought was, if they permanently store on-site one set of guidelines, if you don't, and you bring it home like I do, or this gentleman does, point it at work on it. And then it's a different set. Thanks, Mike.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
Again, um, I feel about the obvious that, you know, if you want to go, we could store them somewhere else because it, it's getting carried away. There's just more and more. But mainly, I'm concerned about what's going on in our block, the sixty-four and sixty-five hundred block of, um, sixty, uh, sixty-fifth, I'm going, huh, okay. I just forgot my address. Sixty-four thirty-five forty-third Street, forty-third Street North. And it's just getting worse instead of better. Okay. We have had a truck, a tow type truck, a towing service truck, and for almost a month now, he's been parking it. It used to be in the driveway and then he moved it for a couple of weeks in his front, in front of the window of his house. He also has a black truck. He has a basketball thing. There's the lane on the front lawn. The house across the street has a trailer that has the same junk in it for about three months, three months, and junk along the side of this house. Um, our street's starting to jump out.
I, I understand. And, and the way to get that taken care of, again, is come and see this gentleman right here. He is the city manager. That's his job to take care of that stuff. You could tell, you could tell the five of us every complaint that you have. And the only thing that we're going to do is look at Pete and say, are you going to take care of that? And he'll say, yes, I am. And he'll take care of it. So to save your time and effort and have the feeling that nobody's listening to you, if you will come down to town hall and say, I have an issue with this, this, and that, and the other. And if the man doesn't respond to you and give you an explanation of, that will satisfy you, you know, after the second or third time, then I would say, come in here and say, hey, you know what? You told me to go to town hall and he's not doing anything. And then we can take care of that.
What about, um, certain house where a official lives? And two or three Sundays ago, I was horrified. I was going out to do a mass and here in the middle of the street were cones. A bunch of trucks before, a bunch of trucks there. They say, we have your get together. And I'm like, why do we have to go around this? He had four cones up and he had two cornhole gangs going in the middle of the street. And we had to drive around it. Is that because he's a police officer? No. Did he have a permit? He can just do that on a Sunday? I mean, this is just blowing my mind that these people get away with it. And let me just add this. Three years ago, and Barbara knows about it because I spoke to her, um, I had a pile of stones delivered. I'm in my late seventies. And it was delivered. My son was supposed to be coming that weekend. He could not make it from Deland, Florida. So I was waiting till he could get another day off work on the weekend. And one week later, two weeks later, somehow they accepted me. Policeman stopped at my door and told me that I had to move those stones and he would give me one more week. I literally went out there thinking I could do it. And I shovelled, and I shovelled. And Barbara knows how I shovelled. And I shovelled for a whole week. Finally, my neighbor from across the street came to help me because I figured I can't afford a fine.
How long ago was that?
Three years. Still, let me finish. Let me finish. I have had chronic back trouble since. I did something to my back. I abide by the code. And this is infuriating to me that these people get away with parking a tow type truck, business truck in the front window and having their front yards look like garbage. I'm sorry, but we're just, Kansas City's going down the tubes. And I guess I will meet with him, but I don't think they have listened to
You know how, how much different it is now? If I probably came in.
I see it looking worse.
If you came and talked to Pete over there and said that you had all this back trouble, that man might be probably show up.
I did know that. I followed the rules of a policeman.
I know.
I thought I lived in a regular town that I've lived in five others. I don't want to hear this from you anymore.
I'm, I'm trying to help you, ma'am.
I will go and talk to him, but let's see something done.
Time.
He probably would show up with a shovel. He would probably show up with a shovel and help you shovel it to get it out of your way. Pete, take care there. Anybody else? Okay, this time I'd like to close public forum.
Dave, actually, yeah, please do that. You don't, I'll raise the, uh, the ordinance, uh, Mr. Barr. The next item on the agenda is item one, the memorandum regarding the Duke Right of Way. This is for ordinance twenty twenty-one dash six five six. Ordinance twenty-one dash six five six, an ordinance granting the Duke Energy Florida LLC doing businesses Duke Energy and Electric Utility Rights of Way Utilization Franchise, prescribing the terms and conditions related to Doc conceding municipal streets and rights of way in the town of Kansas City, Florida, for the purpose of providing electric service, providing perseverance, provisions, and providing an effective date. This is a second and final reading ordinance twenty twenty-one dash six five six by title only.
So as we talked, this really is the, actually, the third time we, we talked about this on this forum. And no, nothing's changed. We're probably about six percent of the, we probably, we put it six percent, basically, is the franchise fee that we get. And what do they get in return? Do they get the use of our right of way, uh, right of way utilization permits, you know, contact review to coordinate, things like that?
Motion to exempt twenty twenty-one six five six.
I'll say.
All in favor?
No.
Nope.
We have to open for the comment, Barr.
Anyone like to comment on that? Alan, would you like to comment?
No.
Okay. All of those in favor?
Aye.
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 For an ordinance, can we, it sounds like it was unanimous. Was there anybody voting no?
No.
Okay. So for a roll call, both purposes, all voted aye.
Uh, and the next item on the agenda, we'll be talking about Excela, the technology upgrades. Um, let me start off with a couple of very, this is one of very short videos. That'd be nice. I used to be an educator, remember? He's not anymore. Now I need to be educated.
There's, uh, two of you who spoke at the podium. Um, if you don't mind giving, completing one of these, I'm ready to me.
One thing I'm telling other managers right now is to try, look, look at com is a platform to run everything your company does. I can see the whole quarter laid out in front of me and then zoom into a. The story of creating a thriving community starts with city leaders who have a vision and passion for progress. Because developing smart and safe communities is a complex endeavor, it requires the expertise of many who not only understand city regulations and codes, but they also understand the dreams of residents and the goals of business owners who are looking to build something great. That's why so many city leaders partner with Excela. Excela software solutions designed specifically for government have powered, speedy, paper-free systems at every step of the journey in every area of city development. The story always starts with a plot of land, ensuring it's zoned and permitted for development and moving the project plan through a seamless online approval process. When construction begins, the city leader's vision is brought to life. In no time, red ribbons are cut, business owners open their doors, and customers flow in and out, bringing vibrancy to the local economy. Automated notifications alert officials to conduct services like health inspections and city maintenance requests so that citizens feel safe and secure in their community. And these stories, these breakthroughs, are happening everywhere, from permitting, licensing, code enforcement, service request management, and more. Every day, Excela has been driving efficiency in cities, counties, and states for more than twenty years. And for more than one hundred sixty million citizens worldwide, Excela helps governments grow businesses, protect citizens, and build thriving communities. Let's work together to do the same for you. Govern the future with Excela.
Now, this is pretty exciting, um, to tell you quite a few. And actually, I saw your slideshow in just a moment that shows just how many, the great majority of large cities use this. And in fact, uh, Pinnell's County is one of the, uh, communities that use this. In fact, their system is very robust and basically ties together so many things. And they're, like I said, one of their customers, and I wanted to show, kind of from a local perspective. So this ties directly to Pinnell's County.
Interview is probably the longest portion of the approval process. The ACA application will probably compress two weeks immediately. So two weeks to develop it can easily be a quarter of a million dollars. We look for this project to pay for itself in the observed or expected efficiencies in about five years. They were anxious for that because they hadn't had one that would do that. The direction that I see Excela going is exactly where Excela needs to go. And I think that the, that the principles of Excela are smart enough, um, and visionary enough to bring the rest of the existing clientele to the understanding of where we all need to be.
I'm sorry. Okay, so, um, like I said, this is a very, very robust piece of software. Oh, sorry. Reading that for the people that have problems hearing. Um, so whatever I was saying, I teach a lot of classes, so I leave this function on for people. But, uh, whatever the case is, um, this is a really robust piece of software. In fact, the rollout for Pinnell's County was a one point seven million dollar rollout. Huge. Guess what? You know, through some negotiating and scaling back, you know, what we're looking at doing, I'm, I'm requesting here to council approve me to, uh, spend sixty thousand dollars on this project. Uh, that's, if you break it down, that's several different components. Um, so that's twenty-three thousand and forty dollars, uh, for the first year for eight seats to be able to log information, run reports, again, you know, actually work through this, uh, process. Then there's, um, so we, the contract with the state is through Carisoft. Then I deal with Excela. They're basically the reseller for Excela under a state contract. And then we deal with Redmark. Redmark does the configuration. We're really going to focus on a couple of things to call it costs rather than take the data conversion of everything that we've had and put it into the system. We're really going to start at day one, you know, here and move forward. You know, after we have a good stable system, we can get an intern or hire somebody to just, you know, put the data into that. But we're not going to start off with that again. We're going to start here and move forward. We're really going to focus on things like code enforcement. Like I said, we're putting together the things we need, special magistrate to, to have the team, code enforcement, this. So not only can you, um, you get right from your home, right from your phone, submit a code enforcement complaint, see what the disposition didn't, you know, if you do anything on it, or whatever the case is. And we're also going to be looking at the, uh, building permitting as well as the business tax receipts, you know, what we used to call occupational licensing. Um, it's been a very good relationship. In fact, I think, I think Excela and Carisoft are very excited because they handle a lot of these big cities with really robust systems. They've worked with a couple smaller cities like us, but they really almost want to use us as a, as a marketing tool. You know, they're going to give us a lot of extra stuff. In fact, all the way, you know, they found ways for us to save money rather than go through a three-year contract with escalation clauses. There's a five-year contract with less escalate, lower escalation clauses. But guess what? That contract we can now, uh, terminate at any time, too. So.
Was this sixty thousand, is it already in the budget?
Uh, yes. Actually, in two places, I'm requesting, there's fifty thousand, actually, in the technology upgrade budget. And then I'm asking to take ten thousand dollars from uh, capital improvement project for, uh, street signage. As you know, I'm, I'm getting the street signs done for less than half. So we have extra funds in that. So we have fifty thousand dedicated for this and I think to get that thousand from street signage.
Pete, you, you're telling us a whole lot of facts. Let me just ask you one question. How important is this?
This one's a becoming the backbone of everything that we do. And one of the first things And one of the first things that you have all told me as, as you were going through the hiring process is transparency, communication and interaction with the public and allowing them to communicate, you know, using technology and things like that in, uh, in an accessible way. Uh, most of my research, you know, when I was in college, was about using technology to satisfy the residents out there in a 24-hour asynchronous kind of way. So again, we're a small town and we're here nine to five, you know, with the exception of the police department. This really is a false more, false force multiplier that really makes us seem like a 24-hour operation. So I find this to be extremely important.
Is there a maintenance cost? Is there, is it a five-year contract?
It is, it is a five-year contract, but it's cancelable at any time.
Okay, so there's no additional maintenance or upgrade costs or anything like that?
Well, um, like anything, as we start moving and one more things, like I've already talked to Mike, uh, Mike Vino. And one of the things we talked about, what about, wouldn't it be great if we put a parking enforcement component to it? Well, absolutely, we have to pay Redmark to do some of that. Now, kind of related to that, I know, you know, technology background to you all, it isn't an open source, guess what, if I, you know, do this to them, you know, I can take that data and it would transfer over to a different database and, you know, and still be usable. You know, whereas a lot, you're in a proprietary, you know, format and you believe me, you got nothing.
Right. So you believe that this $60,000 is a necessity that we spend?
I, I see it as a necessity, I see it as very cost-effective.
So I'll just say, I know that previously when we needed a new website because of, or we needed to be able to have better security on our website and it needed to be ADA compliant. Okay, so just as a reference point, um, Kenner City spent $20,000 for a new website that did not meet the original goal of what we needed. And that was to make it ADA compliant. And so we had to additionally go out and get a third-party vendor. And we still have that third-party vendor that we pay for, I think, monthly, annually, something, that we put into the website, which cost us more money. And I think it came up to probably like $30,000. So in my opinion, to put three things in, um, collecting our business taxes, which is very important in my opinion, and, um, doing our permitting, which, may I clarify, Pete, that, um, I know there were studies done before to increase our, um, permitting. And I believe they were approved, but nothing ever got done?
I'm not sure if they were approved.
Okay.
I, my understanding talking to Gary is that they had gotten through, they've done the studies, they had ready to get it.
And, and would we implement this? Would we increase finally our permitting and things like that? So it would even start paying for itself?
Yeah, well, there's two sides to it. Obviously, I'd have to just work with Randy Moore, our attorney, just to make sure that it's consistent with all our laws that we can do. But I think this is an opportune time to do that. Why put in old data and then have to move in and put in new data, you know, in the near future? So that, that would be the emphasis, too.
How soon, how soon are you talking about doing that? I mean, how much time?
To have it completely rolled out and, and, and pass testing and all, I'd say six months, you know, to be stable and comfortable.
Okay.
You know, if I said three months, we'd have something that we can play with and look at. But I think if you look at it, you'll learn in six months.
Okay.
So then it would be, we would also be covering the, um, the new code enforcement also. So that's three things. And right now, I think we just have a spreadsheet, right?
Pretty much.
And so with the new code enforcement, it's been said multitude of times, you know, in our council meetings, like, oh, that's online. But it's just a spreadsheet. If somebody doesn't update it, you really can't tell much of anything. You can't tell, you know, if the electrical's been approved or whatever when you're going to get sign-offs. And with an automated system, you wouldn't be able to. Right, so when our code enforcement's going around, he could pull it up online and say, well, one, is there a permit? You know, what are they doing? Is anything signed off? So we can start enforcing these things in, in, in a much more systematic way.
You know, also, I just want to add one more thing that is a major shortfall in the way we run our, you know, several other things that we do run, like business taxes and building. And that's it, we only collect cash and check.
Right.
And we only do from, so from 8:30 to 12:30. Wow, this opens us up to 24 hours a day. Also, like, if you're looking to see if somebody has a permit, you have to wait for that spreadsheet to get to be renewed, oh, maybe a month from now. Well, you don't know, this would be up to the moment. You know, as soon as that permit is approved or whatever stage it is, we can read it.
What does it take to get us to the next step for this program? Are you looking for an approval of $60,000 expenditure?
Yes.
And the transfer of that 10? We need a transfer of 10?
Exactly, so the conclusion is that we need $60,000, which comes from $50,000 from the capital improvement budget for, um, sorry, for technology upgrades, which is already been budgeted for, and to move over, to allow me to move $10,000 over to the street signs to this.
So that's going to take a motion, second, and a vote?
Well, well, and then that would be.
Okay. Let me, let me just weigh in for a moment procedurally on what we're talking about here. Inasmuch as we're talking about moving money within the budget, if it's not moved within the same fund, at some point, we will execute a budget amendment. He's disclosing to you, this is the way I intend to proceed. We would do the act of actually moving that and you amend the budget in the same way you adopt the budget, which is, say, we adopt, we have a resolution, a hearing, we would do the same thing to amend the budget. If, provided, and it's sounding like these are not all within the same, I, I don't, I'm not, it's not there after all within.
Yeah, they're both in capital.
They're all within capital. We may not need a budget amendment, but if one is required, it will be done. Separately, under your purchasing guidelines, what the manager is contemplating and describing to you is, is often described as piggybacking. And in your, in your, um, purchasing guidelines, within your charter, there is a process for using procurement or piggybacking. Um, if you're hearing the number thing, don't we have to go out to bid? The idea with a piggybacked contract is the other entity has gone out to bid, has done the procedures. Those procedures align with yours and the scope of your contract is similar, if not identical, to the scope in terms of what they're using, which is what the manager's describing. As far as next steps, what he's seeking is authorization to move forward with developing a contract that we would move into. Our legal and their legal would have to look at those things in the, in the precise terms. But he's, what he's seeking today is direction, approval, to move forward with this plan of action. I would still suggest you move to approve or deny as, as you deem appropriate and, and have a roll call vote and, and just to sort of.
He has clear direction?
Uh, but that's what, that's what you, yes, we'd be looking for a motion relative to, the manager's functionally asking you for approval to negotiate with, enter into a contract with Exella for the various services contemplated. Um, he's seeking your guidance and approval on that as you control the persons of the community at large. And that's how we're going, so it would be a motion, standard, procedure motion, public, deliberation, decision.
I still.
Is it a reduced cost because of the size?
Yeah, it's.
Off the pigback.
Like, like I said, it was, it's actually like the counties is 1.7. But, uh, not only that, we get 20% off of the cost because of the, this piggyback kind of a relationship of the Masco, uh, purchasing agents. And, um, what am I going to say? So we got that, they gave us the ability to cancel the contract, even though it's a, considered a five-year contract. You can terminate at any time. Yeah.
But the cool thing about it is just a backbone. So there's, it's just the platform and then you can build off that platform.
Correct.
And you can continue to add to it as other services go available.
And in fact, the reason why, to some degree, it's already cheap. They, they've worked with a similar city, uh, the village of Keppus Game. And some of the stuff that they already worked on, basically they put on ours, configure it, puts in, you know, again, from 1.7 million to 60,000. And even in that 60,000, that's not all software and all of that. I've included a little bit of money for, um, you know, handheld mobile devices and things like that. So this is completely plausible.
So the only thing, I might have missed it, I'm not sure. How much are we saving then? Because you've canceled the contract, don't we have a software contract for the, go ahead?
For, for what? You talking about the website or?
No, 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 not the website, the, um, collecting our taxes.
Oh, you're talking about, uh, yeah, so you're right, as soon as we move into this, we'll, we'll cancel Tom's technology.
So then we'll save some money there.
Yeah, and I don't know how, how much that is, to be honest with you. But yeah, and the software that we have is just so antiquated that.
Yeah, I see.
I don't want to pay any more money on something that, that you go with your memory like ours.
Andrew, do you think you'd like to comment on this?
I mean, I do absolutely support this. I mean, today alone, my neighbor plans on renovating his house and he was, you know, explaining to me how hard it's going to be for him and his electrician to make it down to the building department between those hours. And as, as you said, you know, the fact that we don't accept credit or debit cards, you know, how antiquated are we? Like, I'm, I'm pleased that we're catching up to the 21st century. A lot of residents message me on Facebook and Dave's been awesome enough where if I send him a message, he can go and take care of it and he, and he lets me know. But the fact that he can just go into a database and notify the resident that made the complaint, hey, I want to let you know, I spoke with, you know, the resident, this issue is resolved or will be resolved on Monday, or any of the above. It's just, well, I think, you know, alleviate any concerns that our residents do have. So, um, yeah, it's, it's about time. Again, I'm glad you brought up, you know, transparency and communication with the residents. This is what we're looking for and I'm happy to see it finally happen.
Barbara?
No, we don't have anything.
But I like, I like to ask you.
I know.
Motion to approve the $60,000 to, you want Pete to proceed with the contract?
A second.
Open it up to, yes, sir, come on in.
Paul, actually, 64, call 44, that room. Couple of questions. If I heard you right, um, you said that the public could log in to request permits and that. Where does a public go if they have, um, sign-in errors or, you know, technical errors? Do they go to Exella? Do they come to the town?
I'm sure they, you talk about the validation, they, they put in the address in the wrong spot?
No, they, for, for some reason, they can't log in to Exella to do something. Where do they go?
They, they have a toll-free line that they can call, but honestly, I'd like to point everybody to me. And as the mayor said, I'll probably go with a shovel to your house and, and help you take care of it.
So, so if that's the case, I'm not, I don't want to be negative, I think this is a great idea. So support then is only from 8:30 to 5:00?
Oh, no, they have 24-hour.
When Tom Hall is open.
No, but they have 24-hour that they could call in, but anything that, that I would want to, you know, firsthand, or you, you know, help you through, I would say, you know, come in. But again, I also, and one of those people that just make an appointment with me.
You have a cell phone.
I think what you're referring to, Paul, is that they'll have 24-hour like IT support. So if you're forgetting your username or your password's not working or for some reason, just the website's not working properly, just call the toll-free member that Pete mentioned and I think you would get instantaneous help.
Yeah, yeah, if that's available, that's fine.
It would be 24 hours.
And then, and you also said, if I heard you correctly, that as we get down the road a little bit, we might have to hire someone to keep this updated and log in. Is that true?
Actually, not a bit, I was talking, go backwards in time. I'm saying to save money, we're starting today and putting new data. If we want to start getting more historical trends and see where things are going, we may either, we'll probably not hire somebody, probably get an intern from PTECH or something to go back, do some of those research and, and fill the, the data going backwards.
Okay, so take that one step farther, I think this will be my last comment question. The, uh, notice is that Dave is putting up now, they will not be in this database from day one on. So are those going to be forgotten, let's say, once we start? So that when we do get a magistrate, we can say, well, I wasn't notified, but all of a sudden I got a ticket. You know, where, how is all that going to work? Because aren't we building data now to say?
To be honest with you, you're, we're only talking about going back in a month and a half. And I'm just saying, in theory, I, I, I wouldn't put that in, but in all reality, it's a month and a half. I'd get it done myself in, in a couple of hours, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so the stuff, let's put it this, let's just, to be clear, from the stuff, the date has started, month and a half to forward, we'll be in that system.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Can you, may I ask a little comment? Okay, this time I'd like to close public comment. You made a motion, you made a second, do we vote on it or is it?
He's a poll voter, right?
Yeah, provided you have no other comments to make, a roll call vote would be appropriate, especially when you're talking about appropriations.
Okay.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Cummings?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zamidis?
Yes.
Mayor Howell?
Yes.
Okay, department reports, public works, public safety, and buildings.
So moving to public works, I'll, I'll make a quick report for them. Um, so as always, the Department of Public Works is running around, you know, helping keeping the parks looking good. Uh, one of the things that I've identified that's just becoming a pet peeve of mine is that the, the gates at Old Parks and the Dog Park and the kids' flashpad are just always left open. So I've asked Ken to look into, uh, going along and have closures.
Close.
Yeah, and he's going to be brought some and he's going to be experimenting with some of them, you know, so that we get the, the right device that's going to work for us. Um, they've been, they've done some, uh, some tree trimming, they've done quite a bit of moving things around on the 46th Avenue Trail. Um, I drove past there today and I just love where all the benches are. It's starting to look like it's being put together, uh, very nicely. Uh, related to that, too, you've probably seen the three flag poles that have went up. Uh, the electrics are in, um, we were supposed to get the, um, the lights, I gotta see exactly where they are, but within the next week or two, we'll have the lights there. The electric is already there. Uh, Ken's group was already jumping on it and ready. They've already cleaned it off, you know, pressure washed it and it looks very good. Uh, the only thing left that we have to do is two things, we want to put some landscaping around it and looking at some friendly, you know, far the friendly native vegetation, you know, something that would bring butterflies, I think would be a very neat idea. We're just trying to see that a lot in parks management, uh, really trying to, you know, work with nature and, um, and things like that. Uh, what else? They've done a lot of equipment repair, basically just preparing for spring as we're going forward. And bringing out spring, we are starting to prepare for our spring festival, which we're excited about on March, um, March 5th, from 10 o'clock to 2:00. We've done a lot of advertising for that as well, so. I believe that, that hits the majority of what they've been working on so far. So next we have the Public Safety Department, which includes both the Police Department and the Fire Department.
Okay, good evening. Um, in January, the Police Department continued to do traffic details, excuse me, to address, um, concerns brought forward, um, 58th Street corridor for speeders, 46th Avenue corridor and 49th Avenue were summarily focused on. Um, during the month of January, we stopped 50 traffic violators, which consisted of, um, issuing 36 warnings and 14 traffic citations for the month of January. The other thing, like, uh, the manager said, we're working on, uh, finalizing the March 5th, um, Spring Festival. So that's a real big event for us. I did put a stack of brochures in the back, so it's going to be a, a great event. People can take some brochures with them, give them to friends, family. We're also working, the PD's also working with town staff currently to put together a calendar for 20, the remainder of 2022 for, uh, town events. Um, we have some events we've done historically and then also we're looking at some new events. Um, we're looking at bringing back, um, like our movie in the park event, um, out there and some different stuff that's going to be really nice for our, uh, residents and visitors for the rest of the 22, uh, 2022 year. And then, of course, we have the big Fourth of July event, too, that we're working on as well. So that's some of the stuff that we have going on in the Police Department. As far as the, uh, Fire Department, um, I got the stats in front of me for, uh, January. Uh, basically for January Engine 16, which is our, um, our station right next door. Um, they responded to, for January, they responded to 56 medical calls, uh, one vehicle accident and seven fire-related calls in Kenner City. Um, outside Kenner City, they responded to 42 medical calls, 19 vehicle accidents, 33 fire-related calls. And then also the Life Safety Management Services, they did 79 fire inspections and they had four false alarms and they reviewed, uh, uh, plans, uh, they had four plan reviews. So that's, uh, just now.
Are there any areas of concern? I know your officers have done a great job on, um, like Friday nights when people come and visit our, um, town and open doors and. and open doors and piliage through things. Are there any areas of concern now that we need to be aware of?
Um, we've had a few and they've been very random and it's been a county-wide problem. Our detectives working with St. Pete PD, the Sheriff's Office, MPL's Park currently. Um, there's been some kids that have come from, he's identified mainly south St. Pete, up here on bicycles and so forth, and they're hitting, uh, unlocked cars mainly, trying the door handles. And we haven't had a, a lot this month. There was a few more in December, but there has been a couple of random ones. And, um, we've been encouraging people obviously to keep their doors locked. We have it on our, uh, our BMD boards, the video boards, um, out in front of the PD and Town Hall. Advising people to keep their doors locked, uh, their vehicles. Um, and, you know, obviously, that's always a good idea because you get very few car burglaries where they smash the window out, especially in this kind of an area. Um, the majority of them are always gonna be your, um, your unlocked cars or trying door handles and stuff like that. But, um, our detective was successful working with St. Pete to arrest a couple of them last month of the car burglars. They were young kids. They were, you know, I think one was in his 14, 14 or 15 and, uh, and, um, he worked with St. Pete to identify more, so that's something we're working on.
Thank you.
Sure. Anybody else have any questions? Okay.
And moving on to Town Office reports, if we can start that on a, do you have anything to say, people?
Oh, um, remind me. Oh, okay, yeah. Next Wednesday, Randy is going to provide a training for our board members to give them a refresher on, um, Florida sunshine, government in the sunshine, as well as an orientation for our new board members. Um, they've all been assigned, uh, government email addresses at, um, you know, at kennecityfl.org um, as part of the Form 1 reporting requirement. I did send out an email recently informing everyone that the Florida Commission on Ethics is now requiring us, uh, to do digital reporting versus the old paper and pen you did last year.
Uh, very short, uh, including not only the board members got emails, but so did some of our employees that didn't previously have emails, uh, generally.
Would you do that once a year?
Yes.
Yeah. And this, since we haven't had a board's meeting in a while, that's why I'm having a longer prep on everything from the technology, the test days.
And when is this?
What day is that again?
16.
The 16th is the training.
16, what time?
6:30.
Oh, it's an evening day?
Yeah, it's next Wednesday.
This is for, when we say the boards, we're talking about our Planning and Zoning Board and Board of Adjustments. You folks are welcome to attend because it will be an open meeting. But this is not the four-hour mandatory annual training hours that you have to get. This is more just welcome back. We haven't really met functionally since COVID. Um, here are your duties and responsibilities, board members. Not votes specifically as to your board, but also more generally, public records, law, and assumption of all of that.
And we did have to get them email addresses as well. Who was that? Was that the Florida Commission on Ethics meeting?
Yes.
Yeah. So, so we've got them emails. We also got some of our employees' emails that didn't have them. This way we can communicate and again, track, you know, the information that we sent to them. They can't say, "Well, I didn't get that piece of paper. We sent you that in an email."
So it was a brush pickup request.
Okay, so. Yeah, brush pickup request. So in addition to the service that we get from solid waste, if, uh, say you had some brush that you wanted to collect immediately or there's too much, uh, to all the configure, things like that, you previously could call Ken and he'd kinda eye it up and tell you how much the cost. Now we've basically redid the form. We've also tied the cost to book the actual rates of the employee, what it costs for them to come out there, as well as we tied, instead of it just being arbitrary, what does it cost for an hour's use of our pickup truck? They actually tied it to the fee of reimbursement, isn't that's kind of a, a common thing to do? Uh, we'll be doing the same similar kind of, uh, scenario when Ken goes out there and does, has to move people's laws for code enforcement and things like that.
So this will be on, on your computer system. You'll just be able to go on and request a brush pickup and?
Shortly after, absolutely, service request will, will be, you know, marginally, we'll be going one after another, moving every minute. And that's where that extra cost comes in.
Anything you'd like to say?
About brush pickup?
No.
I'm still at that. You're always trying to rush me out the door.
He tried to skip the whole finances.
Yeah, well. So, yeah.
Sure.
Just a couple more things before we get, I just look at the financial process. But I've been in communication with Ford Penellas and machine, uh, roughman. And, um, so they're going to be helping us with the evaluation analysis report letter that we have to send, uh, to the, I think that was Department, it used to be DCA.
Division of Economic Opportunity.
Thank you. Um, so they have, gave me an MOU, I have those just a few minutes before I got into this meeting. But so I have to read all of it. We're contemplating $4,000 to assist us with the air letter and also go into the comprehensive plan. Uh, they gave me some background. I guess back in around 2008, they had done all the preliminary work and all the things to be consistent, sounded like, at least this came in conversation, to be ready to submit this to the state and nothing is actually done. It seems like the ball got dropped somewhere along the way. So again, it's time for us to, to pick it up and, uh, do this. So again, I'll be working with Ford Penellas on that. Uh, I also explained to them that we really, some of the important things, we're looking at increased recreation at our park, you know, more activities as well as looking at intermodal travel, you know, not just thinking about cars, but how are we gonna travel, you know, pedestrian, bicycles and whatever the future has, you know, sort, which is gonna be interesting. Huh?
Segway.
You said segue. I was like, huh? So, you know, I explained to them and, uh, again, I think they're gonna be great people to work with. They were wonderful the way they were previously. Um, we're working on the solid waste, uh, request for proposal. Uh, we still got a little bit that just went out. Today was the last day for comments or questions to come in. I have two weeks to respond to those and we have lots of questions. But, uh, we do have, uh, six people that have copies of the plans. And I believe, and all, I mean, I believe all of them have work here in Penellas County. Uh, so I've also been working with, uh, with Attorney Moore to put together these RFP for the Special Magistrate. Before we talked about that to some degree, we just talked about the, uh, email service as well. And also just, you know, in keeping in the community and being good neighbors. Me and Anna went to the Keep Penellas beautiful, uh, award ceremony that they had last week and had to talk to a couple of interesting people. And really, since they're right here on 66, and I used to sit on the Board of Directors, I'd like to see us working more and more together, having them, you know, really, to some degree, supplement our public works groups, you know, doing some litter cleanup and things like that. Uh, so we're excited about, you know, building those relationships. And, uh, also, um, February 14th, 14th or 6th, I'm sorry, I forget the exact date, but I'll send it out to you. But, uh, the Public Works Academy, the place that I used to work, um, we're gonna have the Board of Trustees, uh, come in and just have a meeting over here. You know, I just wanna bring all of these, uh, folks and just get them, you know, used to saying her name, Kenneth City, and say this is part of the group. And this group, uh, as you were, you guys had, most of you had been at the last event where it was the, uh, Florida Water Protection Control Operators Association. That's kind of like lower management and the working folks. The folks that you'll see here, I would say is mid to high-level management. You're gonna see, uh, the, um, Assistant County Administrator will be here. Public Works Director from at least 10 counties, 10 cities in this county will be here and their assistants. So again, I, I'll send, I invite to, you know, our council and any of you that would like to show up. It will be a one thirty in the afternoon, so that makes it a little difficult. But, um, the last thing that I would like to talk about that I'm very excited, uh, we finally got here, is that financial report, as you mentioned, uh, Vice Mayor. Uh, so looking at it, I think this is pretty easy to, to read and understand, but I just wanna highlight a couple of things. So, uh, right under the general fund, it's a total of 1.4, sorry, $1,443,889, which is 45% of the projected revenues. Um, for the same period, the general fund has expended $748,646, or about 23% of the budget expenditures. Now, one of the things that I was very pleased to see on the bottom right, when you look at the expenditures, when you look at the major divisions, all of them are, are relatively, and actually substantially, I'd say, under budget. Uh, the only one that's slightly above, so this should be about 25% is the, uh, what we're looking at. Well, unfortunately, it's just marginally higher, it's 27%. But that really is just the way things lined, lined up, not to mention, you know, a couple of COVID illnesses and things like that. So I feel very confident that we're in good shape when I look at the total. Like I said, we should be around 45% and around 23%. And, and we're doing some pretty good projects as well. Uh, one thing that is a slight concern, and I prefer not to talk too, too much about that, but on the next page, on page two, when I look at the bottom left, it talks about our cash and investments. And when I look at that cash, now remember, some of that cash is also the, uh, the money that we actually get that in the government as part of, part of American Rescue might have. But there's $2.3 million sitting there getting very, very, very little, almost no interest at all. Uh, I'd like to come back to you all and start talking about what we can do with that money and try to get, do something. When you look at it, it's 86, 70%, that scares the heck out of me. So again, you gotta put that money to, to work. With side that too, um, now that I, I actually have a summary report to share with you and I have a good variance report that I'm getting from, of course, more than that. I mostly have the reading with, uh, Ken, Ken Doyle, for the public boards for, like, you know, the business department. And literally going line by line item and, and having them explain, wait, this is 26.2, that's pretty close, but why are we a little bit over? And so far, you know, we've done that for those two departments and it's been wonderful. A great education for me, a great education for them, going, no, now I'm, I'm having to look at each one of these line items a little bit closer, more closely. So I'm excited about that. Uh, do you have any questions about the financials at the moment and the report I was giving you? Okay, well, that concludes my reports. Uh, next we have the Attorney Moore.
Thank you very much, uh, Major Kabaly. As far as, uh, goings on, as the town clerk stated, I'll be here next Wednesday, uh, training your teams here. Uh, last week, I, I administered a four-hour training for the supervisors of elections across the state on public records. Uh, Friday, I'll be in Daytona doing something similar. Uh, as far as the town goes, as your manager aptly stated, we published a RFP request for proposals for solid waste services. That contract is up at the end of this month. We have a, a tentative, uh, an assurance from the, um, solid waste company that we're presently working with as far as a, um, it's brief extension period while that, uh, RFP remains pending and, and resolved. In addition to that, uh, earlier this week, we published a request for proposals for a special magistrate for code enforcement. For those of you who have been on the council for some time or, or, or coming to these meetings, you may recall when we passed, uh, an ordinance about three or four years ago amending the code to align with Chapter 162 of the Florida statutes so that you have the ability to have a special magistrate or code enforcement board, which the statute already provides for. Presently, absent a special magistrate, that does not mean that there's no ability to enforce. In fact, some of you have made code enforcement complaints that have resulted in fines issued to individuals. Those get processed through the local ordinance violation court, um, uh, and that is, uh, at the Criminal Justice Center. Uh, and that is, it is a, a special magistrate is a more effective system, uh, typically for code enforcement, uh, because with a, when you go to local ordinance violation court, it's similar to a parking ticket. Were you in violation on that day? Yes or no? End of analysis. The fine for violating it is that day. When you have a special magistrate, it's much better, especially for ongoing, what we would call in-rem or property violations. So let's say it's, you have, you have to have a roof on your building, you refuse to put a roof on your building, we're gonna cite you. Rather than cite you on Monday and Friday and Monday and Friday for every day that it's going, you have all these violations. You could say, we're going, you have to come into compliance by date certain. A second hearing is held where it is determined that you come into compliance. If not, then the magistrate who sees this proceeding is gonna impose a fine. That fine would be recurring until such time as you have, they've provided evidence that you are in compliance. The daily recurring fine element can become a lien that is, uh, placed on the property. You can't foreclose on the lien if it's homesteaded, but if it's not, if it's an investment property that they're not investing intending to, you have those kinds of remedies available to you. Um, this is not, I wanna be very clear, an attempt at a profit motive. Code enforcement should never be used for profit. That's not what it's there for. It's in compliance. Um, and so that would be the, the aim of it. It may well be that once we secure a special magistrate or a, a panel of special magistrates, if you will, we could pick, we could say, we're gonna pick these three people. That way, if one of them has a conflict, the other one can do it, that sort of thing. I've been a special magistrate in a committee, in a community for almost two years now. I had one meeting. We showed up, I sat at the bench, and the moment I sat up there, they sat. You know, and so that, 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 that can happen as well. And we, this is not to say we're gonna have code enforcement hearings around the clock. If you can get compliance by the path of amicable and amenable, um, collaboration, by all means do so. Um, this, this will not be, this is not intended to be some iron hammer. Uh, but that's, those are really the major things we're working on. Additionally, your manager and I had a call about two weeks ago to talk about revisiting and, and hopefully revitalizing the revision of your code. Your code in large part remains out of date. Uh, whether that's bringing your signed code revisions, you're bringing your code in alignment with your charter that you adopted, um, eight or nine years ago now. So really trying to, to modernize your, your code and where possible, protect it against the continuing intrusion of preemption that we see in Jalalhassan, which is a whole nother soapbox and a whole nother presentation. Uh, but that is, uh, where we stand and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have for me. Otherwise, uh, thank you. It's always a pleasure, sir.
And Mayor, I'm kind of embarrassed, but I took out one report from a very important person and that's Dave Weiselman, our code enforcement officer. So if I can have you come up and do your.
Do you have any, do you have any questions for you?
They said no.
Oh.
Real quick then.
Hurry, Jay, hurry.
So for the past month, my name's Dave Weiselman. I'm code enforcement for the town of Kenneth City. Um, that was the last one. I've given out, uh, 87 common courtesy notices. Um, I've spoken with 27 homeowners about the different situation of their home. Um, I've got 23 right now to follow up on. The town has put on three stop work orders, one on a condominium, one on a residential home, and one on a commercial building.
How are the residents, how are they handling what you're, what you're doing with them? How is that going?
Pretty well. I mean, there's like, oh, I had a couple that weren't really happy. There's a house that's not too far from you that they have three vehicles and they're now parking all three in the driveway. Where there were one in the driveway and two in the grass.
That they're, they're receptive to what you're?
Yes.
Good. Glad to hear that.
And I'll tell you, I've been on a couple of code enforcement come, uh, issues with, uh, Dave and it's amazing, just, just the way he, he goes and approaches them overall. It's, it's very cooperative and he goes in with the idea, let's find a solution right now. Let's, let's not, we're not getting angry here. Let's see what we can do to, to make this easy for us. And, you know, again, keep up, uh, keep up standards.
Okay.
And just, just so you know, one, one thing, uh, of the 23 that I start to do follow-ups and they have dates on them, um, one of them is the house that was on 43rd Avenue that have all the stuff in the trailer. And then speaking of homes, you know, a couple still by somebody else. No news, owned up, had those owned up from their home and having a, like, a big gig together.
Yeah. I've seen photos, but I know by the time I got there, I know as you looked into it, I believe even when some of the officers went over, if I'm not mistaken, it was already cleaned up and gone, so. Thank you, Dave. I appreciate that comment. How you saying?
There's a lot going on in Penellas County. I was, uh, I had a fortunate pleasure to listen to Dr. Johnson today. She leads the, um, the small business for Penellas County. And there is a lot of opportunities out there for small business people. And she's, um, they're creating a website. It's gonna be One Penellas because if St. Pete's doing something, it affects, you know, everybody in Penellas County. And so the new website's gonna be One Penellas. And, um, so Alt 19, which is Fifth Avenue, that's, um, that is a place where they have chosen, they being, um, there was a lot of research done. And there's, it's, it's gonna be like this, uh, in conjunction with, uh, First Avenue, North and South, with the new, uh, uh, buses, rapid transit buses that are gonna go up and down. On Fifth Avenue. On Fifth Avenue, they're putting these corridors where they're, they have grants and they're going to be building up in certain areas, the corridors there to try to start with our transportation from Penellas County to make it easier for people to get to work and bring businesses in that have high quality pay. And a lot of different things. And the nineteen corridors, that's going to be starting probably sometime late this year. So we'll start seeing things like that. And there's a, a lot of good work going on to ensure that, and there's also some, there's some, Randy can talk about this better than I can, legislation up there that's talking about the, you know, changing some of our land use. And Tallahassee is kind of getting involved in that, where some of the towns in some of the, you know, areas around Florida, they don't have like a forward panelist. Like, we're very involved in land use and we have a whole protocol. If something wants to change land use and we're very conscientious about bringing in businesses and making sure they have land to use. And but industry is changing, you know, you don't have industry like it used to be. So you don't, you don't need a a whole warehouse and, you know, and different things. There's, with the technology, you don't need as much and it just having a transformation. So they're very active on bringing up the codes into the twenty first century so we can best put transportation and safe traveling in with good jobs in Penellas County. So there, like I say, there's a lot going on. So it's, it's quite interesting and what you'll be seeing, how Penellas County is really going to transform the way it is. They have an innovation hub now down in St. Pete, a brand new innovation hub. And so Dr. Johnson is working with the innovation hub and she's also working with libraries, with small businesses. And so a lot of this is just, they're trying to put things together now, but for instance, if you go to a library, you can rent a room if you're a small business where you can hold your meetings and things. And so they're looking into, well, if people have these ideas where they need three D printers and things to make what they've created and then get it through and patented and whatever and build around that. So we start employing, we start manufacturing and all of that. So there's a lot of that stuff going on in Penellas, which I find quite interesting.
All right, I'm good. Lady?
I'm good for tonight, Mr..
Barbara. All right. Tonight's been a good night. Residents here, you see the team that you have always, always come to us. I want you to know that we will listen to everything that you have to say. And we may not be able to give you the answer that you want to hear, but we're going to tell you just exactly how it is. And and Pete over there, he's very good at it. He's, he's our new town manager and he's doing a good job. He's got a good staff behind him. He's got Mike and and Ken and Anna. And whatever that guy's name is, or Randy. And I want to thank Randy for always keeping me in line. He's always correcting me, which is great. I love it. He's just like my wife. But I I just want the residents to understand that here in Kansas City, with the new team that we have put together over the past year, we are here for you. That is our job. That's what we're looking for. If you have something you want to talk about, just follow the proper channels and he'll get it to these people. We'll get it to them. Whatever it takes, we will make you happy. Is that, is that agreeable with everybody out there? Is that what you're looking for? Me too. All right. I have nothing else I have to say. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'm motion to adjourn.
Second.
My second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.